Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, May 22nd, 2006. This evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings, starting with Planning and Development. Member Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple agenda items, and I have a couple miscellaneous. The first thing on our agenda is to talk about the comprehensive plan. Members of the executive committees of the neighborhood associations have been continuing to pay attention to the progress of the plan as it makes its way through the Planning Commission, and wanted to bring our attention and request some action around the ongoing performance measurement and accountability section in the plan, to go ahead and start thinking about how that can work. And I think Ed Baum is here to speak to us on behalf of the Neighborhood Associations.
Edward Baum, 20th East Side Drive. And as Councilmember Phillips refers to, we are looking at the comprehensive plan as it winds its way through the general process. I never thought, five and a half years ago, that it would take that long to work its way through, but it really has. But nonetheless, in August 2003, the neighborhood associations approached the then Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan, suggesting that some kind of process be incorporated into the plan that would ensure a monitoring and a review of the plan as it went forward. At that time, the Steering Committee suggested that it be more appropriate to discuss that toward the end of the process and not in the middle of the development of the plan itself. And I'm speaking on behalf, of course, of the Near East Side Neighborhood Association, as well as the Association of Association Executives. A cumbersome title, but most of you know what that means. In the plan itself, there are a whole series of benchmarks and recommendations and boards, but there's one in particular that we are concerned with, and that was in the, what was called at that time, Section 9, Page 2, which says, "It is recommended that the city create a comprehensive plan management and accounting board to assist in the development and ongoing use of web-based and results-oriented performance measures." The Board will prepare the Athens 2020 Comprehensive Plan for measurability and evaluability by refining existing and developing additional meaningful benchmarks." I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the essence was, instead of a plan which is read only by a few or placed on a shelf and then occasionally referred to, a continuing process of evaluating and monitoring the progress and success of the plan should be developed. The neighborhood associations are perfectly willing to do this by themselves, but we feel that perhaps a broader constituency involving maybe about the same size as the original Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, 13 to 18 people representing the neighborhood associations and other stakeholders and constituencies in Athens. We're recommending that now, even though City Council has not yet received the plan from the Planning Commission, because the Board should be in existence and have a general marching orders when the plan does finally receive approval by City Council. I've been informed by members of Planning Commission that they are finishing up, sort of bobbing the i's and crossing the t's on the plan. They will probably have a public hearing within the next few weeks, and something probably will come to City Council, I would assume, Mr. Mayor, in the latter part of June or July. And if the City Council could then, in the process, at the same time, develop some kind of accountability board, including representatives of the various stakeholders, they would be ready then to develop the benchmarks. You say, "Well, aren't the benchmarks developed?" Paul Wild, a little while earlier, showed me this matrix of benchmarks. If you look at them, some are benchmarks, and some are really topics or suggestions that have to be developed. And the plan itself indicates that these performance measures really need to be developed. And we're doing this because you're spending, or have spent, almost a quarter million dollars on developing the plan. That does include the time and effort of individuals on the Steering Committee, the various public fora, the Planning Commission, or City Council members. And I think there's some expectation that periodically there will be a report to the citizens as to what's happening and why it's happening and how it's happening. So that is my request, that perhaps the Planning Development Committee develop an ordinance which will create the Board, which would indicate its responsibilities, so that it could be in effect no later than the beginning of September. Since you go on August break, I would suspect that you are not going to get to the final third reading of the plan until September, so that would be a reasonable time.
And a lot of this grew out of the Public Participation Subcommittee of that Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. There was a group that worked a lot to make sure that there were frequent and numerous opportunities for citizens to be a part of that planning process. And that Subcommittee's strong feeling all the way through was that there needs to be, you know, a mechanism for ongoing citizen participation. One of the things, as I started thinking about this again, it seems to me that this thing needs to be structured in a way that is thoughtful about how it relates with the city planner, how it relates with the Planning Commission, how it relates with the Planning and Development Committee of City Council. It may be a complex entity to figure out how this all connects. So it seems like we should probably have a small group that works on, you know, looks at the other boards and commissions that exist as a model for how such an entity is structured, and then looks at the language in the recommendation in the Comprehensive Plan as far as the purpose and the charge of this Board, and brings back a proposal that we could look at again in two weeks.
So, could we ask, let me ask you a question. 1316, Benchmark, increase miles of streets with sidewalk, improve conditions of those sidewalks. A plan to put new sidewalks in should start with trying to connect existing sidewalks. So it should be more in the manner of each year, the city will put in X number of millennial feet of sidewalks.
That might be an example.
That's an example?
It is rather general now, so the question is, how do you know if you've done it? Well, if you've added one inch of sidewalk, you've done it. Or one foot of street, you've done it. And I think the question is, what is reasonable for a city our size and with our complexity? What would be a benchmark? A benchmark is something that's a standard, what you're trying to achieve, and many of the things that are in the present Comprehensive Plan do not have that specificity. And that's what this Board would then work with. So you can give a report. You can't give a report if you don't know what the criteria are for doing any kind of rating. And so one of the responsibilities, the Board is working with the Planning Commission, working with the Planning Director, whoever that might be, working with City Council, to develop some kind of way which would say, yes, we're making progress, and progress is measured by X, Y, and Z.
Okay, this reminds me of a question. Really, it's for Council, I think, also. That once the Comprehensive Plan, if and when it's approved, then in terms of these benchmarks and judging whether or not they've been achieved, who does that? Does the Council do that? Or does our new Planning Director come and report what benchmarks have been achieved? In other words, how do we report what's being accomplished?
That's what this Board will do, is to coordinate an effort for citizens to have access to information about how we're doing in terms of meeting those goals, and some feedback mechanisms. Because with any plan, things happen and things change, and you need a way to respond and, you know.
Right, so they kind of oversee that. And then I guess, I was going to say, the Board then reports to whom?
That's what needs to be in the ordinance, probably to Council.
That's one of the questions which have to be worked out. I would presume that we report to City Council, but would in essence, report to the citizens of the city of Athens. It might be, for example, a report such as someone coming here and making a report. It may be an open meeting of all the people who were involved in the original process and anyone who's become interested since then, to simply let them know what's happening.
Ultimately, I guess, let's say, for example, the sidewalk thing, and it's X number of feet per year, or whatever the Board decides, or the group decides. If that's not accomplished, who is that reported to us? Okay.
City Council is a legislative authority, and it really is the one that makes these kinds of decisions. But it's one of these, it's not like a report card. I'm thinking back to when I got a report card in junior high school, and there are all kinds of little bits and pieces, satisfactory, satisfactory. That's where they use satisfactory, or outstanding, a couple of those. Or needs to improve, the old N. And I think, it's basically an indication, you know, if you come along a year or two and you say you've done nothing, you've made no progress, then someone says, "Well, why not?" Maybe the Planning Director has to become a little bit more proactive. Maybe City Council has to become more proactive in terms of budgetary considerations or legislative considerations.
So ultimately, if we're not meeting these benchmarks, then what? If we're not, I mean, if we're not meeting these benchmarks, what happens? I mean, yes, it's reported to Council, but what does Council do about us not meeting those benchmarks?
You are accountable to the citizens of Athens.
That's right.
And if they wish to make a change, they may.
We're not going to build the sidewalks, I think that...
No, but we appropriate the money for it. I mean, essentially, and I don't think all this is always going to be on the responsibility of City Council, because some of the desires in here have, we have very little to do with.
Right, I know, that's what I'm kind of getting at here.
Well, I think the report would go out to the citizens who are actually paid for the entire Comprehensive Plan, which is all of us. If it looks like it can have development aspects of it, then it'd probably be something to address through Chamber of Commerce. And realize, we also could say, plus throw more money at the Chamber of Commerce to make them work better, or not. If it's a question of, you know, planning subdivisions, I suspect it would go to the Planning Commission. So this would involve a lot of different sections of community, I think, at this point.
I think, Muriel?
I have the suggestion that was, I forget what it's called, but anyway, that was given to City Council in 2003. And the last sentence of that is, "Where benchmarks are not being met or maintained, community members will assure, A, the identification and analysis of the factors contributing to substandard performance, and B, the formulation of corrective strategies to improve performance standards." So I think that the suggestion then was that this group that would take on the responsibility of making sure that the community was informed of the, whether or not the benchmarks would be met, would also take on these two shores.
So a lot of these details are things that I think we do need to be able to sort out. What I am thinking at this point is, it would make sense for, the members of the executive committees of the Neighborhood Associations said they're willing to try to pull something together by looking at the model of other boards and commissions. I'd like to include someone from the chamber, and myself and the Mayor, if he's interested in that process of drafting this. So that when we bring it back, we have something a little bit more specific to try to chew on and, you know, make sure that it's going to do what we want it to do. But I think it needs a little bit more work before we get into that really thorough discussion. This was just to make sure people are aware of the general idea. If there are other issues that you think this group needs to consider as they're crafting this, it'd be good to kind of surface those and get them on the table.
I just wanted to be sure that there's a mechanism for decision-making when there's a conflict within the Comprehensive Plan, that there's a prioritization process to decide those issues that will occur.
I would assume that that ultimately becomes part of the administration and part of City Council's responsibility. One of the things about Comprehensive Plans, it has all kinds of goals and objectives and desires. You can't meet them all at the same time or in the same speed. And that becomes part of that balancing act that takes place between the administrative and the legislative branches of government, to move toward the kind of picture of Athens that we want. We originally said that it was going to be Athens 2020. I understand, I don't know if it's accurate, but I understand from the memory of the Planning Commission, they've now made that Athens 2025. Well, it's still a 20-year plan, and plans, like all kinds of things, are subject to 10 years ago, if we had a, when we had a Comprehensive Plan in 1991, no one was considering adding 821 acres on the northwest side of town to the city, and what does that do? So all kinds of things happen and change, and that is one of the reasons why those who develop and work with plans say you should review them and update them constantly. Almost a complete revision every five years, but it's a continuing process. You may say, "These two things don't work together." And someone then, this Board or another group comes to City Council and said, "Okay, which do you want? If you're going to put your money in, what part of the codes do you need to change to make them compatible?" Those are the kinds of questions which will have to be worked out in terms of the guidelines for the Board and the cooperation between all elements that are involved in the Comprehensive Plan implementation.
I just have a question, really, more for you and the Mayor. How's the process going in hiring the planner? Where are we on that?
We're still in the Athens, receiving applications.
Oh, really? And when does that close?
It's supposed to close this week, but we've extended it before because of lack of Athens.
I know. How's it going?
Still very few.
Really? Okay. Do you think we'll have enough to close it this week?
I'll have to get with February, she was off today. This is where we are.
So, you know, this, the Planning Commission still has the plan, and there are going to, you know, we will be looking at the whole plan and all of the content. This is just a piece that it seems like if we get it started and moving now, we'll be better equipped when it is approved, to be able to leap into action. So, any other comments or concerns or thoughts that I should kind of carry to this group as they're drafting the, working with me to draft the ordinance? Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we are moving ahead with University Estates, and I wanted to make sure we have time to discuss it, if people have any more questions or concerns. Where we are right now is, I've asked Ron Lucas, who is now in the Street Department, but who used to do GIS for the city, to take the map of the Planning Commission recommendation and actually do a color-coded one that has the shading and just shows it really clearly. And then Planning Commission members will look at it and make sure that that does represent their recommendation, but it'll just make for more clarity about where the different zones are. Because right now, we have this line drawing with the circles and the zones written in.
In these two places where lines were drawn, between the open space and some proposed development, so Ron would attempt to do that too.
We do have lines there now, and the Planning Commission signed off on that. We did get those lines added, but decided, actually, the Law Director recommended that we try to do the color coding just to make it all crystal clear, what the intention is.
So like behind the golf villas, and that, there is a line that shows?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Lance is here, if anyone has questions, if you've been thinking about this, or if you looked at the map and other things came to mind that we need to know about.
Is there a bond for the road constructions?
I don't believe that there is. You're able?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there a requirement for bonds for final plan approvals?
I don't have my code with me, my copy of the code.
What? It is.
So this is something that is...
We had a bond at one time, and it was out of Florida, because it was based on a Florida bank, paying to a sort of irrevocable line of credit in the amount of the bond. We were requested to suspend that temporarily so that they could transfer it to a local bank. And we did suspend it, but the money, the line, never came back. We've asked for it repeatedly.
Okay, so we can assume that they will follow all the rules all the time pertaining to the wellhead and all other aspects? If they follow this rule as well?
If you'd like to ask Lance any questions, he is available.
Lance, can you answer any of that?
As far as the bond goes...
You need to come up to the mic.
You can sit down if you choose, over there, or the microphone on the table.
The camera would work better at the podiums.
Want to hear?
I'd prefer the podium, Lance.
Oh, I'd have to, to, my name is Lance, right from University Estates. I would have to let Dr. Connor answer that question. I did not, was not involved in that. The road is probably 90% completed now, and we've got a final base coat to put on from the top of the hill where the houses are. And we chose not to do that until we get a few more houses, just because of the traffic on the road. But from the top, from the, where the houses start, start at 682, the road is already completed. And so that's the update on that.
Lance, it's my understanding that there was always a representative of the city making sure that the road was going in to specifications, is that correct or not?
We, every time we did anything, we called ahead, and that pertains to water and sewer and the road, and we also had the county involved, you know, from the start, because at that time, we weren't sure, you know, which direction we were going, so they were always involved.
Okay, I'm sorry, I want to understand this. In other words, there's supposed to be a bond for the road, and we are not going to have, was that the discussion that just happened? That there's supposed to be a bond, but for some reason, we're not going to have one?
We don't have one.
We don't have one. Well, it would seem to me appropriate to plan to have one. I mean, if that's, if those are our rules, then it would seem to me that we ought to follow them.
Good idea.
But I guess...
Well, we have followed them, it's the developer that hasn't. But there's no penalty section within that section of the code either.
Well, can we, well then, why have the rule? I mean, it would seem to me that there would have to be some way of holding the developer to the rules. I mean, if we require a bond, we ought to have a bond.
If there's, if there are things in the code that we need to work on, to be able to follow through on stuff like that, and I think we should. As far as wellhead protection is concerned, University Estates is working directly with Egon, who's our consultant for wellhead protection, and have been working directly with them for all of the plans on the golf course. I guess I'd like, if we can, to keep the conversation focused around the annexation and the zoning, which is what we're going to be considering at this point. Other aspects of this project overall will come along in their own time, as specific plans need to be approved.
I'm sorry, I appreciate that, but since we were going forward without this basic thing, so I guess I would like to understand, I mean, I heard the Mayor say that, you know, there was some issue, but in terms of the developer, what solutions do you have for the bond situation?
Actually, I can't speak for Dr. Connor, but the only thing I can explain to you is what I told you about the percentage of the road done. Now that we will be posting a maintenance bond, along with, you know, we have to also take care of any water and sewer issues for a period of time afterwards. Mayor, is that one year or two years? I forget.
The road's two years, I think, water and sewer is one, I'd have to check. There's no bond required on water and sewer.
So, just lying there. Go ahead.
So the...
Just lying there.
We just talked about, what, annexation, zoning?
That's what's before Council. We're looking at a recommendation from the Planning Commission to annex the land and to assign zoning designations, as recommended. It's part of the development agreement. I know that there have been problems at different stages, at different attempts at annexation, and at some, with some aspects of the development agreement.
So what part of accountability is this of the Comprehensive Plan, this annexation that we're talking about? We don't have a bond, and the final plan was approved without it. There's no...
But the whole project isn't plotted. There's only a portion of it that's plotted.
I know you said, "Let's talk about something else," but I really feel that we have to talk about bond. And you said you couldn't speak for Dr. Connor. Yeah, so maybe he could speak to it. In other words, we have this issue lying on the table, and so I think it would be a good idea if we were able to address it. And if you can't address it, then maybe we need to have a person who could address it.
Carry that message.
Okay.
The bond in question was to assure that the roads were built to the city's specifications. As the Mayor said, we kept up our end and had people, city employees, out there at every stage.
Inspecting it?
Inspecting the roads. The roads have been built to city specifications. The bond would indeed be in effect for two years to guarantee that that may not happen, but we are assured that they were built in the manner that we required them to be.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. So in other words, the bond was to make sure the road was built.
And the roads, a performance bond on the roads, and the roads have been built, all
of them, according to our specification. So essentially, the work that was covered by the bond has already been done satisfactorily. Is that correct?
One small example, there is the final coating of asphalt that is going on, that if you go up there, you would see that the edging, oh, Lance, that far? Something like that?
Yeah, the final inch and a half.
That will be put on after all the construction equipment has gone back and forth, so that the top of it is not ruined.
And it is just like...
A normal thing to do.
But there are roads up there that have not been built yet, that are on the plan.
And I have to say that I am sensitive, because I live in a subdivision, that the roads are really, I think, poorly constructed, and even though it's only three years old, they're really, they've been had to be repaired, and they're really in very, very bad shape. So since I've personally experienced this, you know, I think it's something that we want to make sure that, you know, that people follow the rules. And we appreciate that the roads thus far have been built well. And I appreciate Jim's explanation, but if there are more roads that haven't been built, even though we think you're probably very nice people and intend to do it well, I just think it's important that we follow some of the rules.
A couple others that's waiting to get in here, Amy has a name.
There's actually, this does pertain to the annexation. I know that with Sheldron, the concern was, you know, as far as our police and fire, you know, if they're going to be making runs out there all the time. If we are to grant this annexation, then the police and fire staff will be responsible for all those additional people, correct? And how many additional people is that, that we would be essentially putting?
It will, over time, be significant. It will also, by annexing it, those people will be paying city income taxes and, you know, paying the utilities in the city and all of that. So I think that it would increase our ability to add police and fire to cover the staffing needs.
Nancy?
Well, I think first of all, you have to acknowledge that residential developments are notoriously poor on returning the cost to the community, usually less than a dollar. So that's, I think the Mayor said that a couple weeks ago, too. Maybe he didn't. But when we talk about city specifications, and a while ago, we talked about collecting the pub fees. And so this is where we're going to collect the fees, right? $50, $50, because there was this continuous involvement of our staff, and it's a zero-sum game. So unless you think that this is, that wasn't unwarranted charge, here we have ample evidence that it wasn't, because we can look at the reports and see that they were out there. And my second comment really is a minor comment, that people weren't out there all the time. And we certainly have some examples in the city, not that University Estates would follow this, but this is going to be a very upscale subdivision. I believe I've heard maybe 30 units have been sold already. And I guess I'm a little concerned, because on East State Street, when we were out on our tour, remember, there were those places in the turning lanes that had little puddles in them? puddles in them? And so, you know, so a bond would not be a bad idea. And I think it's absolutely essential, because we can't, I mean, a person going out there for an hour a day is not going to catch everything. And these upscale people are not going to sit silent, while spending three and four hundred thousand dollars for their houses, and say, "Fix this road." And whose responsibility will it be but ours? And if there's a puddle in the middle, we're going to hear about it. Can we have him back to talk to us, please?
I don't know.
How he's going to handle this, please? Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. I have a couple miscellaneous items. One is just an update. Several projects that have happened recently have drawn a lot of attention to the city's flood plane regulations and the number of homes that we have in the flood hazard area. So I've been talking with Steve Pearson for a while and with some residents of the flood hazard area about looking at those recommendations from ODNR about higher standards for flood plane development. And what we can do, I think the natural hazard mitigation plan is, that the city has completed is a really good step, and we can look at that, we can look at those recommendations for higher standards and come up with some ways to implement some of those. One of the things that, that could happen is we could become a community that's eligible for a reduction in, um, flood insurance premiums for people who end up paying that. I, like many other people, probably just got a notice about increased cost of compliance and, and looking at, I think about eight hundred dollars a, a year in flood insurance where I live. So, you know, anything that we can do to improve our regulations about development in the flood hazard area will be something that'll make the community safer and hopefully save people some money on their flood insurance. So Steve has gotten in touch with Cindy Crisilius at ODNR, and they are actually developing a presentation about some of the, the possibilities that communities can look at, that they're going to use at a conference in mid-June. And we're going to try and get her to come down here sometime in late June to meet with interested citizens and do this presentation. So I'll be talking to Steve and to Cindy and trying to find a time that'll work, but I wanted to let folks know. Jim?
Earlier discussions I'd had with Steve about that also included Bob Eichenberg. He was very interested in being involved on the county side, too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, he's in the loop on the emails, and there are a few people, um, in the, in the area who live in the flood hazard area who've been very interested in this, and some other citizens who've been very interested in this over the years, who are going to definitely be invited, but will publicize it once we've got a date. I think I saw, no? Okay. Um, the other thing that I have is just to bring up that I'm aware of two people who are planning to be out of town on July third, which is when we're currently scheduled to vote on University of States. And it's...
Me, too.
Oh, you, too. Three people planning to be out of town on July third. I would like to request that we, um, schedule a special session on the twenty-sixth. So we'll be having first reading then on the fifth, our public hearing on the twelfth, second reading at a regular council meeting, and then have a special session the last Monday in June.
In June? I, I'll be gone then, too.
You'll still be gone then.
But maybe others will be here.
Okay. I'm wondering if Amy ran to grab a calendar?
No.
No? Other people are looking at calendars, huh? Okay.
I'm looking at calendars.
Well, we've got time to think about the date, but I just, I want to make sure that enough of us are here for that.
On the twenty-sixth, you're saying a committee night? Ask for a special then?
Right. Have it just right before the committee meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Is that when summer school starts?
I don't know. I don't just summer school. So, June twenty-sixth, right before the committee meetings.
That's okay with me.
Okay. So then we'd only have one person who is going to be out of town. So is that okay with folks if we schedule that?
And then not have a meeting on the third?
Well, there will probably be other things on the agenda. I don't, I don't know.
I just...
Okay. So it'll be the, the Fourth of July holiday, and we'll do the...
We're going to start July August recess.
Right after the Fourth of July holiday?
Yeah. We could always have a meeting that following Monday. So we could transfer it to the committee meeting night? Do we need a rolling of council to do that?
Not tonight, we don't, but...
Next Monday, we will.
Sure. Okay. Next Monday, what?
We're going to transfer the meeting from the First of July, the First Monday in July to the Second Monday in July.
Okay. So that will not be a committee meeting? It'll be a...
Is that okay? We're going to do it at council meeting.
Okay. Um, any other miscellaneous for planning and development? Okay, then we're adjourned.
You don't even have to do it, is that what you said? Will be our regular, oh, I'm sorry. I probably did say that.
I don't know that you can do that.
So you want to do Halloween first, and then, um...
We can have a special session and do anything we want. We can cancel a meeting of council, but let's not call something a regular meeting when the rules provide for it.
So we'll cancel the July third, especially a special session on the twenty-sixth?
City Services Committee, and, um, I think we're going to switch our, our order, start with Halloween. And, um, about three minutes, is that what the rule was?
Yeah.
Hit the button?
Hit the button.
Tonight, we did have a conversation with council on Halloween with the focus on the possibility of fencing in the, or out, of fencing the event and charging admission. Most of the people who attended the meeting were, were quite negative on that point, um, and continued to talk about, well, there are other activities that we could plan and other ways of bringing in money. And the, the point that I made at the conversation was, it's been said many a time, and nothing's ever really happened. And the bottom line is the city and city council are not going to plan and do those events. It has to be people coming to us with a proposal that the city can live with and the university can live with, um, in order to make something like that happen. The city personnel is maxed out on Halloween. They're not going to be planning dog, custom dog, uh, parades and, and so on. Part of the conversation was if there were a number of activities occurring, um, that, um, participants might be able to buy a wristband that would give them discounts at all of these different events, and that then there would be some, um, money generated from that, which would answer half of the proposal of the fence. The fence proposal came from an interest in recovering lost revenue, lost funds, uh, on Halloween and making our downtown area a more secure and safe place. Many of the people who spoke at the conversation felt that it would, um, be a disincentive for a clean and safe event, that people would be angry that they were fenced out of something that they've always been able to have free. And that, once again, the suggestion that perhaps we need to make it bigger and better, not try to fence it in. I, I must say, I'm a tad skeptical. I do understand that to do the fencing would cost probably in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars for the, the fence and manning that fence. And, um, charging admission, I felt a conservative estimate, um, would bring in fifty thousand dollars, so you would recover your cost plus, uh, begin to, uh, pay for some of the other costs of Halloween. I have been speaking with the police department, continuing to talk to them about this issue as well as the streets department, and, um, they, they have some trepidation themselves. It is a huge project, and it might be that what we want to consider is, um, seriously planning towards this for oh-seven Halloween instead of oh-six Halloween, and offering the possibility that if, um, university, uh, students and the clean and safe Halloween folks, uh, can get together and create a, uh, proposal for the city and the university and, uh, have activities that they organize, that they sponsor, that is no further cost to us, but does recover some cost. In other words, some of the revenue from that, those events would come back to the city and/or the university. That's what was discussed in that meeting, and I thought I tossed that out, because really tonight, we have to decide if we're interested in putting that fence in these ordinances. Jacob?
Okay. I know that you've been really working hard on Halloween, and you've talked to a lot of people about it. I, I just, and, and I'm new to it, so I'm just going to look at it from one perspective. And I was going to say, I think one of the things that seems clear to me from the conversations with council, um, is that there is a lot of interest in it from the student side, and I appreciated the fact that, um, representatives of the student body came and seemed to be willing to look at new ideas and maybe come up with some recommendations, and I think that's really wonderful, and I hope they'll speak tonight. And the Clean and Safe Halloween group, you know, also, there seems to be some energy in kind of coming up with some solutions. So I just wanted to say that, you know, that those were encouraging things. Now, in terms of this, the decision tonight, um, I, I guess, I guess, are we really saying that we have to make a decision about the fence now?
We would have to make a decision to move the, put it into the ordinances to begin reading them, so that the ordinances are done before our August break.
So, so really, our window in terms of alternatives for the fence, i.e. wristbands or other kinds of things, is a pretty narrow window?
That is correct.
How narrow, like a week?
Well, no, I mean, it's three readings, and, you know, so there is some time, and I, I guess, uh, one of the possibilities would be not to put in the fence provisions and then change our minds, or vice versa, I, you know?
In other words, the ordinance can, moves ahead in terms of Halloween, and then the fence is... I guess I'm wondering what the window is, so that people maybe could come forward with some suggestions, and we could talk about them, and then, and then make a decision about the fence?
As someone pointed out in the conversation with council, uh, the students leave very, very soon, and so to accomplish some organizational things in that amount of time would be pretty amazing. Now, I know that students can do amazing organization when they really put their mind to it, and I, I think that, uh, a model that I might mention was the Amazing Relay for Life that occurred this weekend, and in three years' time, that's raised from, like, small to, um, a, a wonderful event. So the energy is there and the talent is there, um, but could you all get some initial, um, plans together before you all leave for the summer? Want to try?
Yes.
Okay. Um, in, in that case, if we're not going to put the fence on the, um, the ordinances at this time, then all I will do to the ordinances is, um, change the dates and, uh, take the suggestion of the police department that we loosen up the hours to just say, the noise ordinance to coordinate with the bands, uh, rather than give a specific time, and that's basically the only changes to the previous ordinances. Other council comments? Paul?
Um, I sat in with the Conversation Council. I would like to point out that if I'm correct, the scope services for both the Tourism Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce is to handle this. I want to thank you for stepping forward on this and stepping into it, so to speak, which you have.
Thank you, Bill.
Dubious distinction, I know.
Been there myself.
At the same time, um, again, the logistics of making a fence work is very difficult. The past two years, I've put forward a modest proposal of trying to kill Halloween, which I think is very doable, as well logistics involved. And that's really the trend I go towards if we can't recoup the money.
How would you kill it?
Yeah. I think some people at the Conversation this evening alluded to the fact, and I mentioned it, that a fence might create some sense of antagonism, and my concern has been that it would actually maybe exacerbate problems off of Court Street and, and the close-in neighborhoods. Having said that, I, I realize that nobody has more experience dealing with this Halloween situation than the Athens City Police and the Athens City Administration, and they're the ones who are recommending to us this fence idea. So I continue to give it some serious thought. I haven't decided, because I have concerns both ways.
Yeah, and I'm not totally against the fence, but I, I just want to see what other alternatives there are.
Um, I share the concerns about creating an atmosphere that's going to be more antagonistic, and I share the concerns about pushing more people into the neighborhoods where there's, it, it has gotten more out of control in the past than the uptown area. And I know that we've heard that the idea for the fencing came from the police department, but I haven't actually heard from the mayor, and I would like to, um, hear your opinion on this idea.
Well, the idea of the fence was first discussed in two thousand and one with staff, and ultimately, at that time, we rejected it because of the additional workload that it would put in the details that we would have to go through. Because, quite honestly, you're not going to staff this with city employees. It's going to be hard enough just to get it up and then take it down within, what, a twelve-hour window or so. And there has to be some, uh, organizations come forward that, for some reason, whether that be their own fundraising, uh, goals or not, to, to help in the manpower to, to do this task. But I think there's a lot of planning that would have to be done. If you told me tonight that you're definitely committed to spending money on the fence, I'd be scrambling to get it done by then.
Right. That is a concern.
It's just a logistical problem for ourselves. I mean, most of these details of Halloween have been worked out over the years, and we've got a game plan. We still spend an incredible amount of time on it, but, uh, yeah. It's, you know, Halloween, you know, we, we strive everything that we can to, to make it as safe as we can, but we recognize that we're badly outnumbered, and if there's even thirty people that would want to totally disrupt it and do it bad for everybody else, they could do it. It's not that hard. It's, it's not a secure area. And if everybody wanders in and out, and they're all in costumes, most of them, so you don't know potential troublemakers. We've been lucky.
A couple of comments. I, I did talk to the police, um, some of the police staff about the neighborhoods and, and pushing trouble off into the neighborhoods, and there were really a couple of, of, um, things that they commented on that. One was that if the uptown is a more controlled situation, that they would have more capability to, um, monitor the neighborhoods, that, that, that would be spreading people out probably more into, like, it, it's on private property instead of on our city's public property. And the third thing is that most of the bad problems that we've had in the... that we've had in the neighborhoods have been after the hours of the Uptown party. They really have not been within the scope of the Uptown party. And, and what that's caused is officers that are already exhausted having to kind of start over again on a late-night situation. Amy?
You know, I was just gonna say that while I'm not completely in opposition to the fence, I'm just trying to imagine this fence erected around, you know, all these people. And I just, I just don't see how it's possible without there being more problems than less problems. I just, I would rather, or I would prefer there be more, some, more speculation on, you know, how you actually handle fencing in that many people, you know, when all things considered. I know you talked about, you know, concerts, you go to concerts, and they're already fenced in. But, you know, as some of the students pointed out, well, that's to be expected, whereas with Halloween, we don't expect it to be fenced in. I just don't understand. I'm just, like, trying to visualize this fence, and all I can see are people climbing over it, or, like, trying to, you know, break through it. I just don't see how it's possible. While I certainly am in favor of a more safer and cost-effective Halloween, I don't see how this fence proposal answers that.
We could begin planning now for an 'oh seven fence. And if something wonderful happens with Halloween this year, and we say, oh, well, maybe it isn't going to be necessary, we could, we could not go ahead on that. But Jacob?
Okay. I was gonna say that one thing that concerns me about the fence is this, as the mayor said, these, you know, groups would come forward to kind of, as a fundraiser or something, help kind of man the entrances. And frankly, that concerns me a little because we don't have that many people that live in this town. And, and, you know, to have, you know, let's say, myself doing security at the gate. I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure that's a really good solution. I, I do think that, that what we're talking about is having enough money, in a sense, and having, you know, promoting it well, or at least having enough education about the event out there to the students. You know, we kind of, at least contain some of the more violent activities. Is having enough, you know, what I keep hearing is the police are exhausted and everything, so that we, we need enough, we need enough personnel, I mean, ideally, so that those people wouldn't be exhausted, and we could have a second tier come in if we needed to, would have enough coverage. I mean, you know, just to make sure that it's safe. So it seems to me really to be, you know, a significant economic issue. And so if, if there were some solutions for somehow paying for security...
Right. And that is what the police are saying.
Right.
Higher auxiliary police.
And so if there were a way that we could figure to do, that this, if the students, and I am interested, I hope some of them will speak tonight, in, in terms of what some possibilities are to create a safer and, you know, fun event that can be somehow made safe. I mean, I think that's probably what the city, most people would, would feel comfortable. I mean, would at least agree to, at least tolerate. Paul?
It sounds like the fence is not going to be able to be done this year, possibly next year. One of the baby steps in between would be to create some kind of program in the interim where you want to pay into it for extra vents.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yes, okay. I, I think that's something, you know, whether, I know the chamber does coupons, people buy books up. It could be something as simple as that, you know, a series of events, actually in the periphery of Halloween, or at Court Street as well.
Right.
And really, at this point, it would require the university to buy into it, chamber, tourism, anybody who has an activity they could plug into, in a sense. I mean, if that's, if, and that would be the start. I mean, it's like those little cards you swipe at Kroger's or CVS, or whatever it is, you know. You bought into that because there were discounts involved in that, you know. It's, it's where they get their data, but it's also a plus for these guys who want it. So, you know, it's something in between charging them for a fence and, or a wristband and something else.
Right.
As a possibility.
A swipe card might do it, but a band they can't luge, you know, they're telling their...
Or, like, you have it printed out. I mean, basically, you could get printed it and do something like this, and give them a, you know, monogrammed, race up at evening.
Maybe it'll be a collector's item, if anybody did it right.
Yes.
I, I guess what I need at this point is from council and the, the City Services Committee, which would be Nancy and Debbie and myself, not put it in. Nancy? All right. I would, yeah, I will give them the opportunity to speak, but I...
But we're not doing fences, so they can come back and speak next year, and we can move on.
Well, they're here.
No, they came, I think.
Yeah, I know, I know. We spend a lot of time talking about something that's not going to happen.
But I do think that it is an opportunity to begin looking at it for the possibility of 'oh seven, where there is enough turnaround time to have it thoroughly planned, even if it is an alternative.
I, I would like to see and hear from the students who are here.
Okay.
But, right. But there might be some things that could happen this year that could be tested and then implemented more fully the next year.
Well, yeah, just, like, two seconds at a time. I'm Tim Longville, by the way. The City and County Commissioner for the Student Side, Mr. Bruce Nash. He's my Vice Commissioner for City and County. And essentially, I mean, this has been something relatively new issue that's just popped up. So it's really kind of come to a head tonight for discussion. And I can personally tell you that this evening, I'm sending out a email en masse to the student body, students and other leaders of the student body to come together and to at least form some type of discussion before the year is out. Again, I'm against the idea of, of, the idea of a fence, for reasons that have already been mentioned. But we do agree that there has to be some type of cost effect to balance out your, your, the city's debt. But what that is, you know, we've had some ideas about volunteering, providing wristbands, alternatives for people to go to that they would have to pay. But that's something that we're going to have to really kind of come together and organize. And again, it's a little bit off the cuff, and it's something may not really come together until the very end of this year, perhaps even the beginning of next year. But we appreciate the fact that if it is indeed left out of this particular ordinance, that it gives us time. And my own personal dedication to forming some type of, of group or committee to perhaps bring other voices together to the students.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo this, and it's a Tim. But not only, I think, the university, the students, and the city need to be on the same page, and have to have the same goals and intended outcome in order for something positive that's going to benefit both parties to happen, where the cost and the safety issues will both be concerned and meet the needs of both parties.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
One more thing. If you do have some kind of actual physical meeting, let us know so we can actually...
Yeah, I asked Morgan when she wanted to.
Yeah, we've already got some emails from people, the, the Halloween Committee is...
Yeah, the Clean and Safe, great.
Yeah.
We might also want to see, see the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Bureau, since they need to be involved.
All right. Yeah, appreciate it.
You can get, thank you. Larry Payne is here. You could probably get his email address if you wanted. From the Chamber of Commerce.
If there is nothing else, I will turn the City Services Committee back to the Chair, Nancy Dane.
Wait, that's it, Halloween?
What? That's all?
No, no, we've got the liquor pyramid, no for Halloween. And then?
That's it for Halloween. I think that's what the noise thing's about.
I don't know.
We just wanted to take a walk, kind of.
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a proposal for, for liquor license approval.
Who's with you?
What?
We should have flagged it down, shouldn't we? For the thing on North Port Street, which I've heard about a lot, being, being in the Third Ward. So my response...
Seven West Carver, do you mean?
Yes. And so if the service, if the code enforcement office is not happy with the outcome of their various letters, which I believe you've all seen in your box, I intend to probably move to have a hearing on that particular case. But, you know, that was based, and we never did that, but I think it's probably fine in this case. You all have this material from Steve Pearson in your box, this Houston District Order? Oh, you don't have it in your box?
You read it in the paper.
Okay, you read it in the paper.
Well, Dr. Noise and the parking?
Right. And using the parking spaces for, well, selling beverages. And it seemed to me that he covered it, so it's not in conformity. And then you can vote it or not vote it, as the case may be. But Jim has a larger question. I should have actually asked him to say. And that has to do with the noise ordinance. And we passed out a sheet of paper, unnecessary noise where the noise ordinance is. And Jim, what were you...
Well, we all did get a copy of Christine Chandler's letter that she wrote about the noise at Bronies. And that reminded me of something that I had wanted to do last year, was, was talk about revising some of the language in our current noise ordinance. In effect, the noise ordinance doesn't go into effect until 11:00 PM on weeknights. And I just, having, I think most of us live in neighborhoods where now there are student rentals, and it's a little noisier than it might have been 10 years ago. There are people who go to bed at 10:00. There are schoolchildren who go to bed at 8:00 or 9:00. And I just think this 11:00 PM is a little bit late. I'd like to move it earlier, to 10:00 PM.
And try?
And try.
What do you think about that, on weeknights?
Leave it at midnight on Friday, Saturday.
Midnight on Friday, Saturday.
So change it to 10:00 PM on weeknights.
I like 10:00.
Is an hour going to make a big difference?
Yes.
One hour?
Yeah.
It's a start.
Let's do two.
Oh, we could. That's not what I was suggesting.
Oh, two?
No, it's not what I was suggesting. It's going to be in the paper, why? No, I was not suggesting two hours. Okay, and there's one other...
And the other thing was, if you look at your ordinance, there are six situations that are enumerated. And in the second one, radios and other devices, it says that if it is plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the building structure or vehicle, it shall be prima facie evidence of a violation of this section. That has to do with noise produced by a radio, musical instrument, phonograph, or other machine. We have five other instances that are cited. And each of those is only a prima facie violation if the noise exceeds 55 decibels at any time to be measured by a decibel meter manned by the police force, I assume. I talked to the Chief of Police about a year ago when we were discussing the party ordinance, and I wondered why this didn't prove it, why this didn't take care of that. And he said that the decibel meters that they have been using is not really a portable one, and it has to be recalibrated at every point that it's used, and it's not very reliable, and it doesn't really work. And I guess my question about that would be, is there something, a newer technology that could be used at this point? I don't know.
So it's a practical matter, what you're saying, Jim? It's only, the only thing that's really enforced is probably two.
Yeah.
Where they use what is the equivalent of a walk-away test.
Right. And so why can't we make that applicable to all six of those?
To take that language and put it in that B, say, or, in such a manner as to be plainly audible at a distance. Just put that language in so it applies to all the different kinds.
That's my suggestion.
Okay.
I think that would improve.
Right. We've heard about it before. And I think that from talking with students over time in class, talking about this, they understand how the police can, if they're standing at the edge of their property, assume that they are making too much noise when they can hear it through the walls, the radio through the walls. I mean, they understand it, even engineers. I'm surprised. Even engineers do this for the noise ordinance. I'm always amazed at that. Okay, so what we'll do is kind of cut it out and put it down there as well?
That's my suggestion. And it, the reason I wanted to do this last year is because we get these weekly reports from all the departments, and consistently, every week, in the police report, noise violation complaints are the highest, if not exponentially the higher, than everything else. It's, it's a, it's a real issue, quality-of-life issue in the neighborhoods.
Yes. Okay, so what we'll do under B is if the sound alleged to be a violation of one or more of the above six provision exceeds 55 decibels at any time, 20 hours, blah, blah, blah. Then we say, measured by, and then we'll put, number one, the materials in the records section, and then two, or the sound meter, or the, whatever it's called, sound level meter. So we'll say or.
Wait, where's the 50 feet going?
Well, it's, that goes, I mean, what we're talking about is just copying this one section and putting it also so that the students who call and complain about the university doing construction at 7:00 o'clock in the morning can also have redress of their issues.
That's six.
Well, you mean before 7:00.
Yeah, before 7:00. And we've heard those.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is 55 decibels at any time, as measured by, and then we'll say, number one is plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet from the building structure or vehicle in which it's located, or measured on the sound meter. Okay? It's or, not and. Yeah? Are you going to change the time there as well? Oh, I was just going to copy down the process, which would be plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet.
No, but I mean the...
Oh, the time on that one, yeah, that was in the, yeah.
All the 11:00 thoughts go to 10:00.
Yeah.
And I see three of them?
Well, there's one that it doesn't say, the shouting and yelling doesn't say weeknights versus weekends, so is that, like, seven days a week? Should we just go down and put some? Well...
Is that only the shouting and yelling of peddlers, or the shouting and yelling of anybody?
Peddler stalkers and vendors.
It says only salespeople.
Six, between hours of, now 10 and 7, the shouting, yelling, chanting are making use of the human voice.
Oh, where's that? Six.
Six.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah.
Okay.
I see.
So let's go through systematically and see which each section, the 11 goes to 10. We've got the first one in two. Is there any in three? No, right. Unless it's on the next page. Or is there one 11? No. Sales, between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00. And then if we go down below, if under B, if the sound alleged to be in violation of one or more of the above six provision exceeds 55 decibels at any time between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00, Sunday through Thursday, so, or exceeds 55 decibels between the hours of midnight, is that all right? And 7:00 AM on Friday, Saturday?
11.
Okay. The same shall constitute, and so Debbie, do you know what we're asking for here?
Actually, somebody raised the question about the times that, you know, number one is really any time. And number three is specific times that are different than the other times that are listed. And number four looks like it's any time. This would be the middle of the day, right?
Yeah, the B doesn't match up with the A.
Right. The B seems like it applies to two and six.
Can't we take the times out of Bs and just put, out of B, and put them under each of the ones that's six?
Just save what's a violation, and then put the times in.
And then keep the 50 feet and the decibels in the B part?
And so at any time during the restricted hours?
So we'll just cut at any time between the hours of, because it's already in the body.
I see what you're saying. In other words, it's redundant in B.
Yeah.
Boy, it doesn't match up, because some of it's nine, some of it's 10.
Constitute evidence of a violation is measured by the materials in three, or the noise meter.
So if the decibel changes on the weekend to 70, does that mean the feet changes as well on the weekend? well on the weekend to 70 or whatever would correspond to that?
The 70 is not during the restricted times, and the 55 is during the restricted times. The 70 is.
It says Friday and Saturday.
Or exceeds at other times.
70 at any time.
Yeah.
So there's only to be a feet though attached to that?
It's probably, it says, D says it's a minor misdemeanor.
No, you're talking about trying to get 70 decibels to feet, number three.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's an exponential.
Right, I'm saying if the 50 feet is for the 55 decibels, how many feet for the 70 decibels? Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
I know what you're making sense, but I don't think it's a linear relationships. I don't know.
I think it's linear, but I don't think we can do it.
Don't think it is?
No, I do think it's linear, but.
So 70 feet would be equal to 70.
Why can't we do it?
If you can hear it at that.
I don't know.
65 feet. Cause for some reason it's five less feet than the decibel.
Should that be across the street maybe?
75 feet.
Well, let's just cut it out under B. If the sound alleged to be a violation of one or more of the above six.
Well, that means.
Exceeds 55 decibels.
That's.
You're gonna throw you out the window.
Debbie, strike you off.
The 70 or deep, the 70.
I've more clips you need to put in there.
Are you saying 55 feet any time even during the noise a lot of times?
They give you the wrong section.
Yes, that's what we're saying, 55 feet in.
Anytime.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's a significant change.
55 feet any time.
That's, that is making the stricter standard that currently is only in place after 11 o'clock at night, in place all the time.
I know.
And.
But you think it's enforced any time other than, well, okay.
So if we, if there is a difference in enforcement after the hours, there has to be a difference in the standard. And currently, people do expect that if they call at 11 o'clock with a noise complaint, somebody's gonna come and help them order to tone it down.
So you have, you have it.
So we restore exceeds 55?
Well.
And exceeds 70 at other times? Is that what you want?
Exceeds 55 during the restricted times, and each thing lays out its restricted times, or 70 at any other times.
During the restricted time. You can be noisy up to 70.
Yeah. During the day.
Yeah, during, right. During the non-restricted.
During the day.
And we need to get some information by maybe looking at some other cities ordinances. If there's a standard for 70 decibels, if there's a distance standard for that, you know, if they don't have the decibel meter with them, is there a distance standard that works for 70 decibels?
Cause we're talking about not being able to measure it with the, or that this machine is portable, then we gotta, you know, put in place another.
The judge said that it's fine. He said it works.
So does this have to go through the law director?
Of course.
Yeah.
So do we have a?
Who wants to track down the distance standard for 70 decibels?
In two weeks, maybe Debbie can. She does everything else, she got them right away, right away on Stewart Street.
You're a clipper, Joe, why don't you ask the physicist?
The one that Bill gave me? No, I have this back half, I'm not reading. Okay. Anyone else? Oh, we're so silly.
Only Reddit.
Okay. Oh, I'm, okay, I've got a couple more miscellaneous, go ahead. In keeping with what we had earlier on our discussion, I passed this out, this map, and it's out of American County and Cities. It's an egg map. And it shows how planning happened using a GIS approach in fire delivery. And I guess I was gonna throw out and have you kind of think about possibly going back to Pocahontas and seeing if there's someone we could get to take a look at the city configuration and see what possible locations we could have for fire stations in a 30-year plan. Cause it seems to me that the fire station configuration was designed before the bypass, for example, was made. And those are, those little donuts are isochronal lines, and that means that, you know, it's equal distance, but the, so as you go out, it goes out, what I was, I can't use that word. It's not a bad word, it's just a different word. It goes out pretty regularly, but the bypass is really going to change this. And there were earlier times council members have said, well, you know, why not one big station close to the bypass? And I can give you some names on that, as opposed to scattered around, and every time somebody has a garage to sell, we're talking about putting a fire station there. I mean, how many fire stations do we need and how should they be located? And I think it's a sort of thing that probably, maybe two or three people in town could do the GIS on it, but they probably would take too much prep time. But there are people, Pocahontas, for example, Randy Melnick said he knew of people who would be able to do a study for us and talk, not about staffing, but about location. Given the way the city is configured, given the current road situation, what's the best place to have a station? And then we'd be able to move forward in a systematic way instead of sort of second guessing what might happen in the future. I don't want a decision on this, but I'd like you to think about it. And you could talk to Dale Tampe and Gary Van Meter, cause those are people from the past who pretty much thought that, you know, maybe we need to think about it. I remember we were doing the CCRC, I hate to even say this in public, but somebody said, oh, that's where the fire station should be. And you heard it too, didn't you? Yes. And, you know, there was some thought that went into that, and, you know, maybe we need to reconfigure, maybe we need to look over a 30-year period on where the, the next, how we should organize the space, where it's sprinkled, and the rest. And so I'm just throwing it out there. I know that in our, in our comprehensive plan in chapter 13, we say that we want to optimize our service delivery, and I think that this is one way we could do it, because certainly they're fixed in space. And I think it's very hard for those, for those of us who are here to really understand. I mean, I think you can understand how to run the fire truck, but I think it's a bigger problem to look at the time-distance factors and the rest. And I, I don't think a stopwatch in a vehicle is gonna cut it. I think we need to do some modeling. And so call me a modeler if you wish, but I'd like to propose that next time we meet, we talk about trying to hire someone to do a plan for us for location. And then after that, staffing will flow from it, I think, I hope, I don't know. I sort of dropped this on you because I scanned this in this afternoon, and I'd like you to think about it, and we can talk about it in greater, in greater detail next time. At 30 years, I'm not gonna be here. Yeah?
And you get a price for it?
No, I don't, I would probably want to know if we're gonna even consider it, probably. I'll try and get a price, I'll call Randy and see what he thinks.
Nancy?
It's cheap, I mean, if we do it right, it's gonna be a money sink. Cause we cannot ju, you know, I mean, and then maybe public relations too. Yeah.
So you're talking about looking at this, as I say, this doesn't take into consideration roads? And you spent, and you mentioned sprinkling as a factor?
Sprinklers, isn't it?
Traffic for certain years in advance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And where, you know, I mean, we have, somebody mentioned armitage. I mean, so we have this new development out there, what's gonna be the impact? And it seems to me our present location isn't necessarily the best one, so.
It's not the worst either, but.
It's not the worst, no, the worst would be in my house. But anyway, that's it. That's my second one. My next one is the water easement. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this for the university land, 6150. Did you get the paperwork on that, or am I the only one who got it? I'm the only one who got it. We need, I'm so privileged. We have a loop that we would like to construct, and we have an easement ready to go, and I would like to have an ordinance up for reading. It's a loop that connects and, I placed a copy of an easement, this is from Ray, from state of Ohio on behalf of Ohio University, granting an easement to the city to maintain water, service, fire safety loop on the first portion of Continental Property Site, Walmart, Burger King, Ruby Tuesday. At some time in the future, there'll be a second easement dealing with the strip stores and Lowe's portion of the site. Our primary interest in this loop is maintaining fire flow to the hydrants. Okay, so it sounds pretty important, so okay with you, I'll have it up next time.
Okay, wait a second, so this is for, they're giving us an easement so we can pipe in there, is that on?
Yeah, the piping's already there.
Piping's already, so that, what are we talking about then?
We had an easement.
They want us to be able to maintain it if it's under our easement, then we would maintain. Our interest is that we wanna make sure the fire hydrants that are spaced out around each one of these businesses does have adequate pressure and we maintain it, which is the same thing we do in the Athens Mall and other malls that we have. We go into the private property through easements.
Okay.
And maintain the fire hydrants, we don't go past that.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, I probably did slur the word maintain.
No, I, well, I wasn't sure whether they were there or not, or you put some or in, or, you know, there were no hydrants at the, or.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So that'll be up? You need this? Okay. Nope, we're not. Next, my next question is.
She's on a roll.
Well, I finally got to the stuff for this year. I was wondering, Mayor, if we could have, if you could come back next time I have a meeting in a month, and come up with a temporary salt storage solution, maybe a concrete or an asphalt pad. I know I'm putting in a driveway, it's less than 15,000, and a cover over it so that the next time we do monitoring, they don't find sodium chloride in the wells.
Is that what they're finding?
No, but it's true, I mean, you know, I hope that, or else maybe any glue?
It's falling apart.
It is lost here.
Any glues, carpola, something?
We've looked at those before, we have a file on that because we looked at canvas type things with, it's basically what you're talking about, so cement floor, concrete block up a little bit, you know, a few feet, and then you, the roof over it, rather than a permanent structure is one of these, almost like an umbrella in some ways, that then gets slashed out. We have a file on that, I can get something to you on it.
Cause it would be good for us to do.
Again, our thing was location again.
Yeah.
Cause we wanted to get it out of the wellhead and.
It seems that we'll be tangoing with Melody Stewart for a while, so, you know, maybe.
It's been extended.
Yeah, so maybe we, if we could do it temporarily, it would be cheaper to do this than to continue on with the tango. Okay, what's your miscellaneous?
Okay, some time ago, the Clean Committee was here, and at that point, I thought they said they were ready to give us a report in a couple of weeks.
No, they're, they're meeting this Friday at 1:30, the group is, and they're, that's the purpose of the meeting, is putting together and compiling, hopefully the final stages of that report.
Oh, good, so when might we expect to get that?
Ask me after Friday, cause I'll, you know, cause that's the purpose of the meeting. The last meeting we had, a couple of, the two of the committee chairs were unable to come, so we are, I'm not positive of where they are in their reporting.
Okay, cause they're doing good work, and it's important to us, and I wanted to make sure that they were planning to come forward.
Okay, that's it on miscellaneous. Next time, we'll, probably Jim can bring up under his committee first time, the lease pickup proposal for a final round, since you did so well with noise. Okay. Carol, do you have anything?
Just for last one.
Say the best for last.
Arts and Recreation, the first item that I have is I would like to put a ordinance on the agenda for Monday to move the August art market down to West State Street in the area where the triangle is, and it goes by Domino's, to close that street instead of Union where it currently is. This is.
That would be east if it's wrong.
East, okay, it's East State Street, but it's just the beginning of East State Street, right. That, this is by request of the retailers down there, they would like to do a joint activity for a one-time trial basis, so that it's, they have their places open, and there's music, and there's the arts, and so on. And so I would like to put that through.
So that would be to College on one side, to the east, I guess, East State Street, Mill on the other branch, you know?
It would be Court Street and College, in between Court and College.
That's right.
On Mill or East State?
On both.
East State and that whole thing?
Just the one side.
The side where Stevens is.
Stevens is on the right, Domino's is on the left, East State, right.
East State's there, Mill extends on up.
Just East State, okay.
And I have spoken to the, both the Streets Department and the Police Department, they said it was not a problem to do, and that if it's a go, just get back to them, and they said actually it's probably easier than the other location. And the retailers are anxious for us to consider this for a permanent arrangement, but I suggested that perhaps we try it the ones first and see how it goes. So this is for the August market.
What is that in August?
At first Sunday in August.
The only, there are two churches down there, the Catholic Church and the Christian Church, and the Christian Church might be, well, maybe not.
Now, the Christian Church would not be in the area, the Catholic Church is, and we would work with them on the project, and start it sufficiently late at.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to give them the light service. When, when are we starting these days? What, what time is the art, are we closing the street?
It ordinarily starts at noon, but we were talking about pushing it back an hour so that it will not interfere with the.
That'll solve the problem.
Okay. Is it back to 11 or 1?
1.
Oh, moving very long. Under miscellaneous, I just had several more announcement type things, and I know the mayor has one item. I want you to know that the Southside Park restroom will be open this week, looking pretty good. And I also wanted to tell you that some of the soccer parents, and Nancy mentioned this previously, came to the Parks and Recreation meeting to talk about the soccer fields. And what has been decided is that the people, the ballpark folks down at the West State Park would be told that no more fences can be put up until we have new soccer fields. So it will not interfere with the soccer tournaments and leagues, either in the fall or next spring. And so that situation's been taken care of, and the soccer parents are going to begin working more with the local soccer program to work towards soccer fields. Reminder as well that tomorrow night at 5:30 out front of the city building, we're going on a field trip to Stroud Run. John Nelson, Chris Hordman from ODI and R will be going along with us, and we'll hope to see you there. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Carol, could you clarify what the local soccer program is? Do you mean the parents or do you mean recreation?
No, neither. There is a soccer organization in Athens.
Which would be parents primarily?
No, it isn't.
Well, I mean, Jim Cox and some of the old guys, but, I mean, the old soccer parents, but.
But the soccer parents, the current soccer parents are going to get involved with that old guard that's been the soccer organization for some time.
I just, you know, the only thing I would say, just in risk, having been a soccer parent for a long period of time, I do think the values of recreation, recreational soccer are very good for most students, or most kids, so I hope we don't lose sight of those, you know, the idea that everybody plays.
Absolutely agree with you, and I believe that what was gleaned out of that meeting is that there'd been a lot of misunderstanding between two different groups, and it was relatively easy to solve. But Jenka, did you have a question?
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Well, let's let the mayor go first.
Okay.
Okay, I need, just like normal, I need money. At the pool, when we filled it with, getting ready for the pool season, the filter room kept getting flooded. There was obviously a water leak near that. We've had Maiden and Jenkins come in to dig down, and the reason for that is this water line is 13 feet deep. We have had to put steel sheeting around the base of the building there, because otherwise we might be getting under the foundation with this repair and watered out. This is, of course, not had been expected within the budget, the 200 or 300 areas of 270 recreation. We don't know what the cost is yet, but by the time the work is done, which is, you're gonna be before your next meeting, I'll have an exact figure for you. They're estimating 12 to 24,000 dollars, and there may be some. They're estimating twelve to twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, and there may be some, uh, parts there for it, too. Uh, we have twenty-seven thousand unappropriated in the recreation fund, so it's going to be tight, but it's also something, unless, unless we do that this week, we don't eat open Saturday with the pool. So that's the good news I've had since Friday.
The twelve is better than twenty-seven.
Well, I know, but until you really, I mean, they've opened up the hole, and they've put in some of the sheeting and everything, and they've looked at the joint that's, uh, you know, that's leaking, and we've, I think they were to get that on order today. Uh, it was a timing materials type job. You're kind of at the, at the mercy, but we, we don't have the shoring or any of the equipment to be able to get down that deep. We have to contract it out.
But the good news is, it happened before the season opened, and, and will only cause a slight delay in opening and...
If anything else.
Which is good. And it could have happened in the middle of the season. Oh, but Jenka?
Um, I just wanted to bring up Stroud's Run before the next reading of the ordinance, and I know that, Carol, you've worked really hard on this, and many people have, the Citizens Committee and Planning Group and everything, but now that we're kind of down to the wire, and we have a decision to make, I, I would just like to, to get kind of the case made a little bit more clearly, um, before the next reading, and citizens have come forward with various issues, and these are not all of them, because I know that other issues have come forward, um, but just a recap on how the fire and police situation will be handled as a result of the increased responsibilities. Or, I, I, I know we've been, I just like to see all the pros for this put on the table. When I first heard about it, I thought it was a very, you know, kind of an exciting idea. Like, you know, I know we've talked about having a management plan, but, you know, I think the citizens would like to see the whole case made also, that, you know, we've seen a budget, but I'd like to kind of see it in terms of how the park will operate and manage, be managed. I know sometimes we say it'll be the same as it was before, but, you know, that's not really providing kind of proactive information, so I guess I'd like to see a little bit more information there.
You gave us a list of questions.
I did.
Can you plan a special session, maybe in early June, to talk, to go over?
Everything's written in your email that you sent us?
Yes, I, I did send it in.
I answered all of them.
Well, I, but I'm not sure it's just to me.
To all of council.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess my point is, maybe it's not just information for me. I feel that, you know, citizens have come forward and asked questions, and to make a big decision like this, I think it would be nice to have, you know, the case for it presented kind of clearly, finely. It's kind of like, you know, in any big decision, you want to recap and say, okay, why are we going forward with this? What are the pros? You know, how are we addressing some of the cons? Just so we kind of have it all on the table as we're moving toward the final decision.
And task force members are scheduled to come next Monday
Okay.
to address.
And, and I, and I guess in terms of some of...
Not meeting this Monday, but in two weeks.
Could we first, we, and I guess when I say, how is it going to be, you know, I, I think maybe some of my answers, I guess I would like a little more detail than some of the answers that have been provided, I guess.
Yeah, and don't you think that the task force has done its job, and maybe your answers, if we talked about them in public, people would feel differently? You know, I mean, because they have done their job, but, you know, they promote it, but, you know, John, John is the promoter, but let's, you know, let's get down to the police issue and the other issues, just, you know, go through the questions one by one before the next council meeting, maybe at seven. Would that be okay?
Well, I will say that I, this week, spoke to both the police and the fire departments, and they see no increased responsibility with Stroud's Run.
Right, and, and I understand that question, but what does that mean in terms of what happens at Stroud's Run? I, I understand that they say there isn't any additional, but I guess I want to say, how often does that mean people, uh, you know, the county drives through there? What if, how, how long would it take to get someone out there if there were an emergency? So I guess it, it's a little more, I want to say proactive, and,
But, but those numbers don't change whether we operated or whether it's operated by the state, and emergency vehicles are stationed at stations, fire engines are at fire stations.
Okay, and I, and I guess...
You know, it just doesn't change.
Okay, for those of us who are not that familiar with what that means, and I, and I think maybe that's what it is, in other words, if we say, oh, it's going to be the same, there are lots of people who don't really know on the ground what the same is, so to basically say, it means that, you know, whatever, it takes twenty minutes to get out there, you know, for the last five years, we've had people, you know, at whatever, take a run out there once a, a month. I mean, I guess what I'm interested in hearing is, what are the, what does it really, what will it look like?
No, you're asking for what it is. I mean, I don't know that it's the look, I mean, most of the questions that I saw there, Jenka, I mean, are ones of operational in nature.
Right.
But there are things that, like if someone is lost in the woods out there, or falls and hurts themselves, it's, it's an abnormal emergency, you know, response that we've done, the last, you know, we assist
Great, and it'd be wonderful, yeah.
The county and those things, with, it kicks in the, all the, uh, you know, mutual aid agreements that, that are, that are in existence.
Great, and it takes, and I guess for those of us who are not privy to that, and I suspect there are a lot of citizens who are not.
Right.
It's like you know the information, and I guess all I'm asking is, that we kind of, for the rest of us who don't know.
I fail to see how that affects the decision, because how long it takes today under us versus the other isn't going to be any significant difference.
All right, I think we're looking at that question, but I think it's the combination of all the questions, and so I, I think it would be helpful, and it seems as if some of the other people on council would just like a recap of the case. Here are the pros, here's what it would look like, here's how, how much, you know, manning of the operation is going to take place, and so...
And I'd assume what budget for it then, because
Pardon?
The response and the things that you do are all budget-related.
I know.
Because they're people-related.
Correct, and what concerns me is that we keep cutting the budget, if, if, so, I won't say keep cutting it, but it's, it seems to me that we're cutting the budget to make it look more attractive, and I guess from my perspective, I'd rather have a really attractive park operation, and if it costs a little more, let's kind of, you know, let's not get it on fire sale, let's say, here's what we see, the, the park, how it's going to operate, and what services are going to be provided, and if we think, gee, we really need a little more money, let's go into it with that view.
Paul?
Actually, that's one of the questions I hear, is that if, if nothing's going to change, you're going to keep it the same, why take it over? Again, it comes down to what's the worst-case scenario, and that's what most people are asking me, what's the worst-case scenario? And I said, oh, it's going to be log, gas wells, and a condo kind of development there. That's the worst-case scenario that I can come up with. After that, it's just in steep, slow decline, you can walk your dog more often, and you could probably just, uh, even shoot geese if you want to, because nobody's going to be there to catch you. So after that, less grass is going to be cut.
Paul, I think you're missing some of the point of local ownership and control. I mean, I was the main thrust of the Advisory Committee, and the, and the reason many of the organizations, such as the Horsemen's Association, and the Local Bike Association, and all the others, got quite excited about the city's taking it over, was that they wouldn't have to be dealing with Columbus, Ohio, and state bureaucracy, they would deal with it locally, they would be able to have then the local resources better to do that, because it's hard for the state of Ohio to organize a group of volunteers to work on the trail. The bicycle trails at Stroud's Run have not been worked on in years. John Naus, with the Athens Conservancy, has taken upon, went after grants with the permission of ODNR, got grants from the Athens Foundation, organized volunteers, and the trails are better now today.
Well, see, I think...
That's that local control and the input that you can gather in regards to why the park's going to be better.
Well, see, maybe that's what we need, a little bit more case being made for, okay? Because you may know that, it was probably discussed six months ago, but as I say, now that we're getting ready to make the decision to say, here's how we think the park will be better. I mean, what's wrong with that? Let's kind of lay it out on the table.
Certainly make the presentation.
And, yeah. And that's, that was exactly what I suggested to Carol, was, I think it would be good to have some people come to make the case one more time about why it's a good thing for us to do, because that question is coming up, and we need to remind everybody on, on air, and we're having a second reading, um, at our next meeting. To me, seemed an appropriate time, I bet, especially, rather than a special session, but...
Well, just, what she's, what, well, what Jenka seems to be saying, though, is that some of the things that are, that are issues are probably operational, you know, so some of her questions certainly pertain to that.
Yeah, and, and I do have this question about, because if this is a great resource, which I hope that it is, we really haven't heard anything, and I, I know that the Tourism Office is not fully staffed, but, you know, I, I would like to see that the Convention and Business Bureau, and I don't know if it's appropriate for the Chamber of Commerce, to come forward and say, here's how we would like, you know, here are some plans we have to promote it, or something. In other words, if this is such a great resource, I guess I would like to hear some ideas about what these two entities kind of have in mind, or don't have in mind, in terms of the park.
Sure, one, one of the things that's there for it, and we've already designed it, is with the new, with the new Hampton Inn that has been under construction, uh, where they will grant us easements, or may even give us twelve acres of land to do it on, uh, but we will build a trail from Hampton Inn to join in with the Stroud's Run, Dilek Trail. They will then promote it within their brochures and have information about it in their lobby at the hotel, and we will try, they will try to get more visitors that are hikers that way, and from our standpoint, we have another access point. I think that's what you're referring to, that's one I've worked on.
Exactly. I think it's just that maybe we don't know all these things, and it would make, it would make, I think, the citizens and, and some of us more comfortable in the vote.
We have ice tee funds for, you know, specifically in the document we just filed, we want to connect your path to not only the Hope Drive Apartments that have low and moderate income housing, but it also goes on and hooks into the trails that we're building in, the Brice property that will connect with it. I mean, all those are there in the plans, and it specifically says in the grant application, going after the state money, that that's one of the things we will, we'll do.
Okay, great, and then maybe Tourism and, and Chamber can come forward and give a little presentation, too, and then kind of a, a service, and I'll just ask for one more thing, you know, basically, what services will be provided out there? I, I know we kind of looked at budget, but then we had to have to extrapolate what that means, so if we could just have a little, you know, outline of here what, here's the, here are the services offered, more campgrounds, less campgrounds, voting not, people on site, people not on site, that would be helpful to understand.
Debbie? Um, I was contacted by some folks after the, uh, first reading about the question of the timber and oil and gas drilling, and the fact that that is now located in the second ordinance, which is the management agreement between the city and the Division of Wildlife. I'm hearing some concerns there about whether that really protects the land, because for some of the citizens who support this...
Debbie, I believe that we'll be having an amendment Monday.
Okay.
Just, just kind of cut that off.
So you don't have to go to your office.
To put it in the, uh, the...
Right.
In the ordinance itself.
To sort it out to all of those people's satisfaction.
I'm sure that's possible.
I'm finished.
Okay, um, I've put miscellaneous on the agenda, and of course, I do have a miscellaneous item. Um, I was contacted today, and, and looking at the right-ofways for Stewart Street, um, and we, it is big enough, um, it's twenty-eight feet wide in some places, and twenty feet wide in others, um, and before we can move ahead, uh, we have to get some specs done on that area, and I was told that Ray is going to be working on that, so I'm going to get in touch with Ray to find out the timeline on the specs and what exactly they'll be doing. Mayor, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Well, I think it's the one question that I've asked, and I'll probably have to get with the law director to do, is that our sidewalk specifications, we have a minimum size, I think, of four feet. Uh, there's not room to do four foot on either side of that, that street, so if we're going to mandate it be done, does it, do somewhere we have to recognize that our, it isn't going to meet our ordinances, as to the size and depth and everything of sidewalks, and so I was asking the law director as to, does that cause us a problem? Or should we note something in the resolution, a necessity or elsewhere, or maybe even change to say, we wipe them that way where the right-ofway allows, you know, because we've got some old right-ofway in town that's not too big, and you're never going to get any street on it unless you're in the domain of the property. And I don't think council wants to do that, my guess.
Okay, but if we have, if we're generating the specs, we could always just say the specs are.
The specs are, but I was, I mean, all the questions recently about liability and everything else, led to, okay, if your specs are such and such, and you're not following them in your orders, what's the potential here? I mean, it's a good question to ask for your attorney.
Okay, um, let's, in the generation specs, since you probably talked already more than we do...
Well, we already have basic specs done. I mean, if you look at, it's supposed to be certain depth, there's so much gravel, I mean, all of those technical specifications are down, and that the intersections must be ADA approved, et cetera. What I have to do is get some degree of cost estimate together, you know, with it, and what is the amount of money the city's going to be putting in, because both of those, the curb will be the city's responsibility, and the handicapped ramping will be the city's, which ADA ramping will be the city's responsibility.
Is that a policy or is that law?
That's in our, that's city code. Yeah, we pay for, we pay for all, everything in any intersection that goes across, on, it's in the right way, this street, because if you have a connecting point of, uh, Union Street, uh, there, and I think, if I recall Playground Drive, there's a street on through there.
Okay. As an option, if we don't have enough sidewalks, can we narrow the street? Can we make it one-way?
We have enough.
It's a twenty-foot wide street right now.
And that means it's a twenty-eight foot wide right-ofway, that's four feet on each side, right?
But you have, do you think they build it straight, Paul? Right back when? No, I mean, what the survey, we, with our person who's not a licensed surveyor says, on this east side of that, you have in different places, three to three and a half feet to both sidewalks, in, in right-ofway. What the other thing that happens with, by looking at it and dealing up with the cospecs, et cetera, is what trees are there, what telephone pole utilities, what other things are in the right-ofway right now, that you, you know, have to deal with.
Yeah. I think everybody, I'm hearing people want to say the trees, but I'm not sure about the telephone poles right now.
No, telephone poles, no, wireless. No, it's true.
Just go around the tree, we've done that before.
Anybody from council? And that's all I have on miscellaneous. Other than, I would like to thank Ron Lucas and everyone else who's involved with, uh, holding the Pomroy Road meetings, as far as going over the whole construction, the timeline, everything, they just sort of put it out there for all the residents, and it was very comprehensive, and it was just really great, so I wanted to thank those guys for putting that on, so...
Uh, one more question, is that, did they resolve whether that slip on Pomroy is going to be done by the state or us? There was no discussion of that a couple of meetings ago?
The state has basically said to us, we, they would expend, uh, the full seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, even though the bid came in under, if we wanted to have some of that designated for what the firm is looking at, and the engineer is looking at, is terracing some, it's not, because what's there is that we feel that the slip prone, it's a slip, but there's no trees leaning that are also, you know, of an active slip. Uh, the contractor seems to indicate, and the engineers are looking at, that maybe terracing of that area was, would be money well spent. Um, I don't think we'll have anything more than what we already have in it. I don't think it's going to be any additional spend served by the city.
Because I see, Paul, your discussion was that they had come along and said, look at that slip, and you got back to them, said, well... at that slip, and got back to them, said, well...
Well, the contractor, yes, did point out that that was an area of concern.
Okay. I just wondered, thanks.
Returned. Made it by nine.